I'd like to call the continued meeting from January 7 to order since we've already had our preliminaries. We'll get right into business. The first matter before us today is a public hearing on the resolution making certain findings of fact approving a contract amendment and a notice of extension of deed of trust and delivery thereof and providing certain other capital, certain other related matters. Can have Donna Clark help us explain what I just said and what this resolution is and what documents we need to approve after our public hearing. So, I represent, ask Dr. Green and then Ms. Clark to talk to us.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, she said I could go first for just a minute if I didn't take long. Tonight you are going to hear about several, several projects that have been many months in the planning process. And we are real cognizant of the need to build our future without increasing our current costs, and we very much focused on that. So, many of the projects that you have before you tonight come with some unique funding sources, sales tax, lease revenues, things that will pay for the projects that you have to consider. I think if each of you think about your own mortgage, or each of us think about our own mortgage, and most of us do get a mortgage for our house, we go in and we have a mortgage payment and it's the same amount for the entire loan period, the 30 years. But with public debt, we have to do what's called even principal payments. So you start out with a high payment and the payment does decline over time, which has been very helpful for us as we've projected the impact of these projects on our budget. So with finances' help, I've analyzed our long-term debt payments, and we're able to accomplish this debt without our overall general fund mortgage payment going up. That's not, not easy, but we've been able to do that. It's taken a lot of work on the project cost reductions, capitalized interest, shifting project start times, and this financing also helps us lower future issue, our issue costs on future projects that we're asking you to approve that'll start a few months from now. I do think we're bringing you a well-thought-out plan, and it works for our citizens today as well as for our future and the needs that we have. I want to thank each of you for your patience, for your support, for your feedback. As we've navigated some fairly interesting waters to bring you these recommendations on the projects that you have before, before you tonight, you were very, very instrumental in lowering the cost of these projects, and we do appreciate that. You have a combination of things in front of you tonight. You have the debt issue, and you also have some cleanup budget amendments. You know, we had part of the project budgeted and now we're budgeting the rest of it, or vice versa. So, you do have some budget amendments, but what we're really focused on tonight is the loan documents, and Donna's going to share with you what we are borrowing, how much and for what.
Thank you, Dr. Green, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If I look tired or if I have a few more gray hairs, that's why. It was, it's been a challenge getting here today. It was an exciting challenge. I'm not sure why. The room is not full, that they're not interested as, as we are in, in these matters. But, okay, if you will start the presentation. Today, we are requesting the approval of $122 million worth of funding for multiple projects. We're also requesting that we refund two outstanding bond issuances. I'm going to go through each of these projects, and I'm going to talk about the repayment plan along with each of them. I'm going to talk about our debt position, then I'm going to summarize all the documents that you have before you, including those very confusing budget amendments. And then you can hear from the public on all of these projects. If you look at the, the list of projects going down the left-hand side of that page, and then across the top of the page are the funding sources for each of those projects. Starting at the top, you have Isaac Dixon Elementary School. The general fund is going to pay $18 million. The school capital commission fund is going to pay $3 million for a total project cost of $21 million. The public safety facility classroom is going to be paid for from the community college capital fund. AB Tech Community College parking deck is also going to be paid for with the community college capital fund. The multipurpose building, the Allied Health Building, $7 million and $41 million respectively, both paid for out of the capital fund for the community college. The economic development project, $28.5 million, has a lease payment source. So, the, the lease payment on that building from the company will pay the debt service payments. The public safety complex renovations, $2.5 million, will be paid for from general fund sources. Bottom line, the general fund is responsible for $20.5 million out of the $122 million. The public school capital fund, $3 million. The community college fund, $70 million. The economic development lease payment fund, $28.5 million. Any question about the projects or the funding source?
So, the total on AB Tech is 73 million, right?
No, the $3 million is part of Isaac Dixon.
No, 73, it's 73 total. So, that's, that's a substantial reduction for it.
It is a substantial reduction than the original plan that was brought in, and I believe it is. It dropped from 83 to 73. There are some other, there's another $3 million in the general fund for Isaac Dixon, but...
And a lot more facility for them during that whole process.
And we're proud of that. An extra 100,000 square feet in the Allied Health Building, parking, parking deck. There's a, there's a significant improvement in the, the quality of, and amount of product that's being brought with Allied Health.
Thank you.
Yeah, you, they brought on the, the parking deck and the outbuilding and, and allied building and brought it down and figured out a way to, to make it work where it came out to benefit the people of Buncombe County, $73 million, if I think that number's still right. So, that's a, that's a savings from where we were, but they're, they're coming out with a great deal overall.
We also request to refund our certificates of participation that were issued in 2006 for a total savings of about $614,000 over the life of that loan. The second refunding that we bring tonight is the project development financing, the Series 2008 that financed the Woodfin Downtown Development, for a projected savings of $3.6 million. And I'd love to have a drum roll here. This is our prize graph. This shows the general fund debt outstanding after issuing these limited obligation bonds. And as you can see, it's a, it's a slope. Like Wanda said in her presentation earlier, this takes some work. This takes some forward thinking and some very creative, some very creative ways to do projects. So, before you start your public hearing, you have a lot of documents before you tonight. You have the four, the four budget amendments. That is exactly what Wanda said. We're closing some projects. We're taking some projects off. We're put, we're finalizing the projects that you're going to approve tonight. The legal documents that you have before you have an interlocal agreement. That relates to the refinancing that we're asking you tonight, to do tonight with the downtown Woodfin project. It just commits the town of Woodfin to their part of the, the payment stream. You have three documents that are authorizing the issuance of the limited obligation bonds, placing a lien on the Allied Health Building at AB Tech, just to serve as additional security for the loan. You have an escrow agreement, which provides for an escrow agent, and that is for the refunding. We will pay the escrow agent. The escrow agent will pay the bonds off, will pay the bondholders off. You have a preliminary official statement, and it is preliminary. That is the statement that will go to potential bond buyers, as well as the writing agencies. And then you have a purchase contract, which includes the letter of representation. It represents the agreement between the county and the underwriter for the sale of these bonds. And the underwriter is the one that takes, takes the risk. If these bonds do not sell, the underwriter agrees to buy those bonds. I do not foresee that to be a problem. We also give you the opportunity to go ahead and authorize Asheville Middle School tonight. At a not-to-exceed amount of $40.5 million, does not obligate you to build it or to borrow the money for it. What it does is save us time and administrative expense somewhere in the future, should you decide to build it and should you decide to borrow to build it. That's totally up to you, but we think it's a, it's a, a good step to take so that we can save time and costs in the future.
Isn't a lot of money going to be saved by doing it tonight?
And, and a lot of meetings and a lot of trips to Raleigh and, yeah.
Actually, this does help set the stage so that we can go ahead with the construction on it and, and borrow the money a little bit as we get to fiscal year 15 in July. So, we'll be ready to go.
Again, it's, it's up to you. It will still require your approval. I'm not binding you in any way by doing that tonight. Just, we can use some of the current documents and just save some money that way. Any other questions before you call the public hearing?
Is the Asheville Middle authorization in the resolution?
Yes, it is.
Been in there? Okay, good.
If you so choose, we could take that out very easily, but, okay.
Great. Okay, the $4.2 million savings by refinancing, is that over short period of time, long period of time, year? What, I mean, is it over the life of those loans, probably?
The 2000, the certificates of participation that were issued in 2006 were, was a 20-year loan. So, that was until 2026. So, those savings are over a period of about 12 remaining years. The other one is over a period of about 20 years. However, the $3.6 million is substantial, even over that period of time. Actually, the real savings is over $5 million. We just, that's the net present value of the $5 million.
So, is the shorthand here that basically you're refinancing the mortgage, pretty much?
At a lower, at a lower interest rate.
You're always looking to get the cheapest rate. You've got some long-term debt that you can, that you can get for, you can refinance it lower, so it lowers our payments, keeps us within our budget, and doesn't increase our costs.
Absolutely. And we're always looking, you know, with bond documents, there's always a period of time that you cannot call bonds. That's for the protection of the bondholder. But when those bonds become callable, we begin reviewing them for potential refunding opportunities.
Any other questions, Ms. Clark, Dr. Green? Okay, thank you. If not, let's hear from the public. I have 5:46. Does any member of the public wish to be heard on our proposed resolution refinancing our debt and related documents? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You know, I would appreciate some housekeeping. On your agenda, on, on your public hearing down here, if you read this, it says, "Resolution making certain finding of fact approve a contract amendment and a notice of extension to a deed of trust and delivery thereof, providing for certain other related matters." Now, can you tell me what that is without knowing anything?
If I looked online, I could. Yes, sir.
Well, what I'm saying, it ought to be clear.
Same doc, same documents we do.
It ought to be clear what it says, so that we understand it without having to go research it, you know, so much. Just, I think it'd be good. It confuses people, and they might not show up here because they don't understand that statement. So, just, it's been up here before. But anyway, on AB Tech, I think you've done a good job of looking at that figures and all. Still, we ain't out of the woods yet. We've got plenty more on the Inca side to look at and all. But on the school capital for the city, a concern that I have is we're, we're giving some leeway for the staff to do some things to try to save time and money. But on the other hand, we had a hearing to talk about it, but I hadn't heard anything back after that hearing in regard to the community, what they found out, how they're going to reduce it, and they never come back to talk to the commissioners that I know of. I think it's all been staff-driven. And to me, thinking about refinancing at a later date to do some things, that's not a bad idea, but we need to be hearing from the people that left here that said, "We want to build this big exotic project," and they ain't come back to talk about what they're going to do that I never remember of, and I might be, you know, one hair short. But I appreciate it if you could look into that, because that's a big project. And we certainly appreciate the support the city schools are getting, because they deserve it and long overdue. The other thing is borrowing money, it sounds great when you're looking at the debt service and all this. It sounds good to the reasonable person thinking about, you know, but when you're looking at credit cards, you know, Enron is a good example. We can borrow, and we can borrow potentially for a long time, and we can do a lot of things. But is it the right thing to do in the long term? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Any other public comment tonight?
Well, does it show that we're not...
We're not taking public comment in general at this meeting. We will do that in February, our February 4th meeting. This is just for the bonds. This is a continued meeting from our last meeting. Any other public comment on the bond, potential bond resolution? Okay, Dr. Green?
I'm going to ask you all to go a little step further than what we, what we originally discussed. We are asking that you do a not-to-exceed on Asheville Middle School, so we can go ahead and get that in our planning and not have to come back to the board, but understanding we would not borrow the funding until July 1st. And that way, we have this wrapped up and we're, we are ready to go then with all the financing.
Okay. And is that in the, the resolution not to exceed, I believe it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just need to do amendments to what's published. Okay.
I apologize, but I was absolutely not listening to anything you said.
You know, some people prefer that.
So sorry.
What I'm asking you to go ahead and do is to adjust the documents to say that we, it's not to exceed $40.5 million, which, to address Mr. Rice's question, is down from the $47, $48 million they brought in a number of months ago. A lot of good work's been done on that project. But that way, we've got everything wrapped up and we can move on. We do save a lot of issue costs on this. That, we would not actually issue till, till July, but we would be ready to go at that point in time.
Thank you. That's what I thought you said.
And just, let me make sure I've got this. Our part, $35 million, I think, right?
Yes.
You're just saying the bond will cover the schools and everybody else's portion as well, and the whole project will be no more than $40.7 million?
$40.5, I believe is the number.
$40.5, okay.
And actually, that's true on Isaac Dixon and the middle school, both. We do borrow the full amount, and they pay the debt service on the difference between what we've committed to and, and the, the cost. And we will bring you an MOU on that, because we are working on, on that piece of it. That'd be the only outstanding document at this point.
Okay. Any other, any members of the public wish to be heard? If not, I'll close the public hearing at 5:52. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Then we'll have some further discussion and comments. Motion by Vice Chair Frost. Is there a second?
Second.
Would that include adding the provision about the middle school? Thank you. Is that fine with you also? Okay. Been a motion by Vice Chair Frost, seconded by Commissioner King. Is there any discussion or comments among the board?
Yeah, the only thing on, on that, Wanda, is talking about the middle school, we're not actually financing anything for it at the present time. We've, we've got Dixon tied in. We've got the other things, but you're just trying to get your numbers ready for the middle school.
The only, the borrow, the, the issue of debt that will happen in February will include Dixon, but the issue of debt for the middle school will come in July, which is 2015, and that's when it was in the capital plan.
When, let me ask you, when are they going to do the middle school?
It's, it was scheduled for 2015, which would start July 1st of 14.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just make a couple of comments. I appreciate the work that everyone, I mean, obviously, the AB Tech projects are a big part of this. I just want to echo the comments that were made before. A lot of, a lot of folks have worked hard on this, and so for the staff and the county commissioners who have been real engaged in that project, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for the work that's gone into that. It's going to be a great project for the future of AB Tech, and I think the, they're going to get a lot of good value for those investments and some of the changes that have, and improvements that have been made in that process. And, and just thank you to the staff for thinking of ways to, you know, to pursue these kinds of investments in a really cost-effective way. The, and, and I think thanks are also owed to the past commissions that have helped the county get into a really strong position in terms of the credit rating of the county, which allows us to make these substantial investments at a remarkably low borrowing rate. So, we get a lot of value for the taxpayers, and the, and the past commissioners deserve a lot of credit for being, putting us in a position to, to access these funds at, among the lowest rates of any, any government in the country. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll call the question. All in favor of the resolution as to include the Asheville Middle School not to exceed $40.5 million provision, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you. New business, we have community services block grant program application for community action opportunities. I think, see Carrie Gibson here to, with community action opportunities to explain this application. I think I walked in with you. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Sorry about that, Ms. Gibson.
Thank you. And I have, I brought seven packets.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for having me. Please forgive my froggy voice, coming off of a non-contagious sinus infection. So, so not only do I, I not come bearing germs, I'm not coming asking for any money. So, we'll just set, we'll just set the tone with that. My name is Carrie Gibson. I'm currently the interim Economic Development Department Director with Community Action Opportunities. I'm here tonight to present to you our work plan as part of receiving the community services block grant funding stream. That's a federal funding stream. We don't receive any county dollars to run this program. Simply to be in accordance with the North Carolina Administrative Code, I'm here tonight to tell you how those dollars are going to show up being spent in Buncombe County in terms of what their overall mission is. So, if the presentation could go ahead and begin. So, I'm not sure how many of you this evening are actually familiar with our agency, but we are a community action agency. We were founded in 1964 via the Economic Opportunity Act, and we work with citizens in Buncombe County, McDowell, and Madison County through this funding stream, the CSBG funding stream, in order to essentially target services to communities to help folks get out of poverty. Some of the programs that we run that you may be familiar with, certainly our Head Start Program, Life Works, which is what I'm going to speak with you about this evening. Also, Weatherization. We do a parenting class for parents who have either had an identified incident of abuse and neglect occur, or who are hoping to gain some skills to, to head off any incidents from occurring in the future. We also do what we call a community response program in partnership with Buncombe County Health and Human Services, and this is targeting case management to families who live in poverty, who have children of a very young age in their home, and also have an unrelated caretaker in their home. Now, you may be curious about those three criteria, but what we know from the literature and the data review is that children who live in poverty in a home where there's an unrelated caretaker and they are under the age of five are more likely to be harmed and often die as a result of child maltreatment. So, we've partnered with the county through the North Carolina Children's Trust Fund to be able to target services to those high-risk families. We also administer what's called the Accountable Results for Community Action, AR4CA database. We are the provider of this database for the entire state of North Carolina, which allows us to enter in real-time data for Life Works and Weatherization, so that we can report back on our outcomes. So, essentially, everything that we do at our agency, because we are a community action agency, and also because we are recipients of this community service block grant fund, everything that we do is driven by what we call the ROMA principles, which is the results-oriented management and accountability principles. So, if you'll see them there, I believe you also have them in front of you in your packet. Essentially, everything that we do needs to be coming back to the so what. Can we answer the so what of our services? And ultimately, those six so what questions show up there on your slide. So, ultimately, the service that we provide, we need to make sure that low-income people are becoming more self-sufficient, that the conditions in which low-income people live are improved, that low-income people own a stake in their community, that partnerships amongst supporters and providers to low-income people are achieved, that agencies increase their capacity to achieve results, and that low-income people, especially vulnerable populations, achieve their potential by strengthening family and other support systems. So, when you hear in just a few minutes about what our work plan entails, I hope that you will see that those six objectives were met as we went into that planning process. So, also, as part of receiving these dollars, not only are we required to present our work plan and our budget to the commissioners for comment, we're also required at the beginning of every three-year funding stream to hold public hearings in the counties where we have our services occurring. So, we've held our public hearings in Buncombe, Madison, and McDowell. Our Buncombe public hearing was held on December 3rd. And what we ask in that, that forum is, okay, consumers of our services, community partners, members of our community, what do you see are the primary causes of poverty? What do you see is the barriers to self-sufficiency? And within that, how do you see that our services can help to remove some of those barriers and those obstacles? So, consistently, and again, this year, these are the themes that come up. A lack of living wage employment opportunities, a lack of employment skills held by the person seeking a job. That's very different from the next one, which is a lack of, of limited educational and vocational training. What we've heard consistently from employers is even though someone may have a technical skillset, if you're coming out of a condition of poverty, especially generational poverty, you're probably not going to be coming with some of those softer skillsets that you or I may take for granted. So, we incorporate that into our overall service delivery. We also have heard from our partners and understand that a lack of affordable standard housing certainly is a contributor, a contributor to being in poverty, limited access to transportation and childcare, the increased costs around energy and food, and unmet health, be it mental or physical health needs that can impact someone's ability to seek and maintain employment. So, I'm assuming that none of these are surprises to anyone sitting here today. So, having identified that these are the barriers, that these are the obstacles to people living in a thriving condition of self-sufficiency, we set our long-range goal for our, our next three-year plan. So, ultimately, by the end of June in 2017, we hope to decrease by 50 or more the number of families that are currently at or below that 100% of poverty threshold in Buncombe County. We also propose that we're going to have a 5%, excuse me, a $5 return on investment. So, for every $1 of our CSBG, the community service block grant funding that we invest, we hope to see a social return on investment of $5 or more. I can tell you that our, our previous fiscal year that we've just exited, we achieved a SROI of $4.32.
Is, is that calculation in your information you gave to us?
If it's not in the PowerPoint, it should be in your annual report that is in.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
So, the selected strategies of how we're going to go about and do this, ultimately, our Life Works model is built around a case management framework. We don't call our case managers case managers, because we believe that people aren't cases. So, we have life coaches who coach our customers through identifying what their goals are. We are very family-centered. We have our program objectives that we have to meet, but we engage our families and partners in that process. Tell us what's working for you. Tell us what your challenges are. Here's how we can support you in that. And then there's a shared accountability that moves through. So, we do that through working directly with our customers. We do it through advocating with different community partners, private, public, all across the board. We do not want to duplicate services. We do not provide direct services, per se, in terms of counseling, housing, things of that nature. We're a holistic program. We believe that we have community partners that can provide those services really well, and we don't want to duplicate those services. So, moving forward, again, just in how the coaches do that, they, they guide and support to help remove the obstacles and barriers. Each customer, when they're enrolled into the program, they develop their own individualized action plan with their life coach that is monitored every two weeks in partnership between the customer and the coach. between the customer and the coach to make sure that the, the initiatives that we're, that we're bringing forth, the opportunities that we're, we're creating for our customers to make sure that those are clearly aligned with the barriers that they've identified. Again, it, my favorite saying is the so what. So we can do all this really great stuff, but at the end of the day, does it meet the targeted need? So in terms of our holistic approach, you can see here, even though we are a program whose primary mission is to help folks become self-sufficient, and ultimately, what we know is having employment or a source of consistent income is what allows people to at least rise over that federal poverty threshold, we don't believe that money in and of itself is the only factor that contribute towards poverty, that contributes toward poverty. What we're really seeing through the work with our customers is that if you are lacking in resources in these other domains, so if you don't know where you're going to sleep every night, if you're worried about where your next meal is going to come from, chances are, if we're holding you accountable to going to a training program at AB Tech, you're likely not going to be able to achieve that outcome because you have some of these other unmet needs. We don't want to set anyone up to fail, we recognize that moving out of poverty is not easy, and it takes a long time. So we assess people as a, as a whole person. Where are you coming in terms of your strengths? Where are you coming in terms of your challenges? The areas where we identified needs, that's where we will pour our resources in. If customers are coming in and they're thriving or stable in certain conditions, then certainly that's not where we're going to target our work with them. So through our work, and you'll see this also in the information that you have, the outcomes that we are challenged with achieving are around these areas, so securing and retaining sustainable employment. Many of our customers can get a, a job a day, but it's the keeping of that job. So some of those coaching skills around how to, how do you navigate conflict when that arises? How do you show up every day? How are you accountable to what's expected of you? So some things, again, that you and I may take for granted that show up in our program. We also have specific targets set around helping folks to achieve educational or training-related outcomes, to obtain and maintain standard housing, to build self-esteem and a strong work ethic, and also to reduce dependence on public benefits. So you'll see in this slide here, the reported outcome measures. Again, this is for all three of our counties, because when we make our final application to the Office of Economic Opportunity, they ask us to combine everything into one. You can see, though, here where the targets are broken out for the number served for Going back again to the idea of this results-oriented management and accountability, we set these targets by analyzing our data. So it's not just as my granny would say, throw spaghetti at the wall and see what sticks. We, we use our real numbers to tell us the story, to see how we need to project. That was a little Tennessee coming out there. Didn't get that, yeah. So how are we going to do this? What money are we going to do it with? So this was not a sneaky snake diversion on my behalf, but apparently, the slide that I sent to Kathy did not open. So the budget slide you all have, again, I'm not asking you for money, okay?
That's a, that's a Tennessee move, too.
That's right, yeah. We have our own way of doing things. But you'll see in the information that I've given you the breakout of what those dollars actually look like in Buncombe County. So the total allocation that we've been awarded for moving into fourteen, fifteen is five hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars. For, what I want you to hear for fiscal year that we're currently in, we're operating at about three hundred and ninety-two thousand. So when we got this allocation, we were really excited and started to think about in terms of our targets and our capacity, how could we use this increase? And then we flipped the page of the memorandum, and, huh, the collective psyche came out because what our funders have said to us is, we're, we're having a new way of identifying the number of people in poverty in your county, and therefore, a new allocation system. However, because of the reductions in funding for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, not only will you get less money than you're getting for fourteen, fifteen, plan on getting less money than you're currently receiving now. So what we did not want to do was make, you know, a big sweeping change that we could not sustain. So we looked at what's the smartest use of those dollars that we could have. You'll see in the, and I again apologize for not having it here, but in the packet in front of you, our client services line item, we've been able to double that. Right now, we're at about fifty-two thousand dollars that we can provide in direct supports for our customers, so now we're at a hundred and ten. When we received the American Recovery and Reinvestment, the ARA dollars, we were able to partner with several local employers, Mission Hospital being one, to say, if you hire our customers who are highly skilled, highly trained, highly motivated, and who come with a support system, we will reimburse you for the first three months of their employment at a living wage rate if you agree to keep them on, certainly barring no performance, you know, problems at the end of that three months. We were able to secure people an entryway into a living wage employment position because we could reimburse with those dollars. We found that to be successful. We could not sustain that when the ARA funds went away, but since we have this short-term amount of money, we've already reached out to our partners and said, we'd like to do this again, would you be interested? And they have said yes. So that concludes the formal piece of the, the PowerPoint here. You'll find in your packet the work plan, the proposal. Everyone should have that. And again, this number on the front, the seven twenty-four, one thirty-three, that's the number that we're being allocated for all three of our counties to serve. But you've got the specific breakdowns of what that looks like for Buncombe County here.
Where, where does that seven twenty-four come from?
So that's from the Community Services Block Grant, and that's allocated, so the, the funding has no, it used to come out of census data, and now it's coming out of the, the SIP or the SAPE, I believe, depending on what, on where you're from. So that's the Small Area Income Poverty Estimate. That's where that new number is coming from. So the, the federal government allocates a large, and actually, a directive just came out today about the, the Community Service Block Grant, the entire federal block. That then comes down to the states. So our state administrator is the Office of Economic Opportunity, which is housed in the Department of Health and Human Services. And then the Office of Economic Opportunity breaks out the North Carolina allocation to all of the counties. So that's the number we get, and we're told, make this work.
Okay.
So any questions or comments at this point? I'd love to, to entertain.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Is your focus mainly, I mean, you can, you could break it down into two groups, those that really that just are going to need a safety net pretty much from now on. It, it sounds like what you're working with are people who, who can help themselves and get out in it, and the numbers look good here. So, so is that the main focus of this program, to help those people become self-sufficient?
Yes, and that's a, that's a really good point. So we are fortunate in Buncombe County, more so than some of our other surrounding counterparts, to have a pretty resource-rich service area in many ways. We know that the Buncombe County Health and Human Services, you know, there's emergency assistance available for folks through food stamps, through Medicaid, through short-term, EBLA, ABCCM, you know, there's other community providers that if you're just looking for an immediate fix, we are fortunate to have somewhat of a system that can support that. Because we can only serve a limited number of folks in our program, what we're looking for in terms of a successful customer is, are you able to move through that crisis? And are you not at so much of a crisis on all of those domains that if we hold you accountable to this standard of employment, are you going to be able to get there? So, so yes, we're looking for a certain individual who comes, not only are they currently in the condition, but they're ready to do what they need to do with our support to move out of that condition.
And I see here, you know, the, the statistics that you've got from Buncombe, Madison, and McDowell, and, and how they've entered different jobs and different wage brackets and so forth, what, what is the, once you get them to that point, do you have any statistics on if they're able to maintain that, or do they return to their program, or?
We do, we do, and those are available on the North Carolina, we actually compile a huge report every year, the North Carolina IS report through the NAS.
I just want the quick and short version from you.
There's some in our annual report, or you can get on the internet.
I don't like to dig through.
I can't tell you off the top of my head, but...
I don't need an exact number, but, but is it fairly high?
So last year of our customer base, we had thirteen people rise above the federal poverty level, and we count them as rising if they've maintained that employment for at least ninety days or more. So yes, we do track. And we're not a program that once you go over that poverty threshold, you have to be exited. We can continue to keep you in our program to provide those wraparound services, so we have long-term data to report as well.
Okay, so, long-term success, that's what I'm, I mean, so you're, are you helping them get to where they're, they're able to?
Yes.
Maintain?
Yes.
I guess, it's, it's one thing to get them there, but we want them to maintain.
Absolutely, and that's the real gem of our program, is that once you rise above that one hundred percent of poverty threshold, you don't have to be exited. So again, just because you've gotten this job, you may still need to be in our program for another year to make sure that you can keep that employment.
How, how many people roughly are in, in a year are in that program?
So next year for fourteen, fifteen, we're going to enroll a hundred and eight, and this year, we're on target to enroll a hundred and five. And we can carry them anywhere from three to five years, depending on what their educational track is.
Long-term, do they stay, typically stay in that long, or do they go on and they become successful and no longer need you?
Every year, we have about a third of that enrollment to drop out of our program for whatever reason. Some of that is they move out of the service area, some of it is they decide, you know what, this program isn't for me, I'm, I'm not at a place where I can make these changes. They say that to us, others, we have that conversation with them, that right now, Life Works is not the best program for you, but we're here if you need to come back.
So you're saying two-thirds of them are successful?
Yes, that would be true.
How vital to the success rate is the availability of living wage jobs?
Oh, it's, it's so interconnected. I mean, it, that, that pie chart, I think, shows how everything is connected. You know, plenty of our customers can go out and get an entry, an entry wage position, but if it's a single parent trying to support three kids, or even if there's two parents in the home, both of them working those entry-level wage rate jobs, it's not enough to put some families over the poverty threshold. So we may be discharging them from our program because they have achieved all of their goals, but they still haven't risen above that poverty threshold because the income that they're getting is not enough for the family composition to put them over that edge.
Do you incorporate any, like, paid leave from work for medical emergencies, or is that part of this equation yet or no?
Not from our program, no. We certainly, we work with our community partners, Just Economics, Children First, Communities in Schools?
Right.
To advocate for those, for those measures, absolutely. We're only as good as our referral partners. It, I'm sure you can imagine the frustration of having a, a highly qualified applicant who says, I can start tomorrow, but I can't afford childcare, and then we're back at square one.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Gibson? So are we to, is this informational, or we, do you want us to approve the application?
No, just no approval needed, just, I've taken your information, I'll, I'll incorporate it into my notes and, and deliver it. This was just for your comment.
Well, thank you so much.
For your viewing pleasure, yes.
Thank you.
From Tennessee.
That's right. Great, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Okay, announcements, the board will hold a retreat January twenty-eighth, beginning at three PM at the first floor conference room at two hundred College Street in downtown Asheville. Our second regular meeting, January twenty-one, has been canceled. The next regular meeting of the board will be February four, beginning at four-thirty in room three twenty-six at two hundred College Street in downtown Asheville. County offices will be closed for Martin Luther King holiday on Monday, January twenty. Commission meetings can be seen on BCTV Charter Cable, channel one ninety-two, ATT U-verse, channel ninety-nine, live on Buncombe County TV, one ninety-two, and on buncom county dot org during the meetings, or online anytime at buncom county dot org. Do we have a need for a closed session tonight? No closed session, okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, is her second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Frost, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, we're adjourned.
We have a discussion.
Stay in line next week.
So much work, we all just got to hit, that's it.
You going out there?
Someplace firm?
Oh, right, 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 right.
I don't know, I might, I'm, I get just with it. Been there real long. Some people don't want to rent, some people do, so.